We can get everyone to come to order. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, May 7, 2018. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the silent prayer.
All the woman Cavalo, all the woman Cato, all the man Digi Ovencarlo.
Here.
All the man Dorso.
Here.
All the man Giacomo. I know he's here. All the man Hadley.
Here.
All the man Kula.
Here.
All the man Lopez.
Here.
All the man Matthews.
Present.
All the woman Martinez McCarthy.
Here.
All the man Napoli.
Here.
All the man Nujame.
Present.
All the man Sherman.
Here.
All the man Pernaruski. Thirteen present, two absent.
Thank you. We have a quorum. With that, the first item of business would be public speaking. Anyone who wishes to address the board, please sign up with Mr. Conway, the city sheriff. Please state your name and address for the record. There's a five-minute limit, and I will give you a one-minute heads-up. Mr. Sheriff, call the first speaker.
First speaker tonight from 585 Prospect Road, Janice Hollywood.
My name is Janice Hollywood. I live on East Mountain, but I'm here for the Silas Bronson Library because I'm the president of the Friends of the Silas Bronson Library. And I think you all know that the library is being cut again this year. But the most important part of it is that the library is an asset to downtown. There's been lots of talk about improving things downtown. Here's a lovely building sitting in downtown with a parking lot, maybe not a large one, but nevertheless, a parking lot, so that people can come to the library. And when I started in the library more than 70 years ago, it was mostly about books. But now, besides books, there's DVDs, CDs, audiobooks, eBooks, magazines, lots of things. And one of the things that the Friends do is provide the free activities that happen at the library. But we can't do a lot of them because they've taken away the librarians who would run the programs. So the librarians present a program that's free from the city, and we pay for anything that needs to be paid for. But we can't pay for it if there's nobody to run the programs. So I think that you should consider the fact that we're losing something for the city when we don't use the full capacity of the library. Our library compares to other libraries in the state like this. It's the lowest in so many things. Well, I won't even show you. There's a chart here that shows what's spent by the city on the various departments. Ours is 0.56 percent. A half a percent of the budget goes to the library. Now, if the mayor wants to use library park, why doesn't he want to use the library too? I think that would be an asset. So instead of cutting back and making us lose another librarian, the librarian that's not going to be replaced for another six months, we should at least do that. And maybe our budget could come up to what it was last year, instead of being cut by several hundred thousand dollars. And maybe, oh, I have to put my glasses on. And maybe we could do something with interlibrary loan. When you go into the back of the library, where they store books and where they send them back and forth, interlibrary loan means that we can lend our books to other libraries when they're called for. Or if a patron comes to us and we don't have a copy of whatever it is that they want, we can ask for it from another library, and then it gets delivered to us. And then when we're finished, it gets sent back. Only, it doesn't get sent back because in the back room now, there's a pile about this high, and from here to there, of books that need to be transported to the libraries that own them. But we don't have the money to do that. This is wasteful, and that's why I'm appealing to you to consider putting some more of the funds that we used to have back into our fine asset, the Silas Bronson Library. Thank you.
Next speaker from 173 Grove Street, Mr. Bert T. Pittman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here.
Would you just state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. Bert T. Pittman, Sr. I live at 173 Grove Street here in Waterbury, Connecticut. I'm here again, seeking money for gym, so I can take kids off the street, young men and ladies, from the age of 16 on up to young adults and older. I have a couple of places in mind where I can go. One is on Thomason Avenue. They want a lot of money for rent. The other place is on Willow Street, across from 7-Eleven. They're willing to give me the building for eight months, but I have to do a little bit of work in it. And as far as putting in bathrooms and shower rooms. We need money also for equipment. And I figured right now, if I can get anywhere from $50,000, maybe to $100,000, it would help me run the gym for about two to three years. Even if not that, maybe $50,000. I could start with eight months. I could put, if I could get money enough where I can go into a gym, eight months, I could put on a show. I have kids ready to box in eight to nine months, and I can put on shows. And that way, I could raise money also to help me in the future. I have put on shows here in Waterbury before, and they were put on up at the North End Rec, which we did pretty good during that time. And that's with Vinnie DeBurl's Memorial Boxing Club. I am sanctioned with the U.S. Boxing Association, and the kids will be sanctioned with the U.S. Boxing Association. Well, they will have insurance on themselves to be in the gym, and from the time they leave home, come to the gym. And from the time they leave the gym and get back home, the insurance will cover them for anything that happened to them. Since I had a gym before, the boxing license for them was about $12 to $15 a month. Since then, things have gone up quite a bit. So I'm quite sure this would also help cover some of the expenses for me. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Next speaker from 62 Avalon Circle, Richard Woods.
Richard Wood, Avalon Circle, Waterbury, Connecticut. The center of the universe, you might say. I'm here tonight on the behalf of a local mosque that feels a bit offended by some things that happened last week. And the Imam should be here shortly. However, the thing is that one of the members of the mosque was denied an opportunity to participate in the Unity Prayer for a Day. And that's not the American way, and it's not the Christian way. I made sure I checked that out because I remember back in the early days, there were times when the Irish weren't allowed to speak. That's because of our color of our hair at the time, though. But the thing is that the pattern here has to be changed by the way we look at things. The man who was running it made a mistake, and no one at the mosque feels that he should be castigated in any way. Part of what we are raised with is forgiveness, to give those who trespass against us. Do unto others as you did others, do unto you. The thing is that the denial of the opportunity to pray in that environment was a mistake. And the thing is, it's better to forget a mistake than to belabor it into infinity because it just makes it worse. There's no harm in discussing it, but I think it's best that everyone recognizes that the Muslim population was offended by the way it was handled. But they don't have an offense that is sizable. I met with the board of directors of one of the mosques. They didn't want any acrimony about this. Take it as what it is, a mistake. And this is the season of Ramadan. This is when you forgive people. And when you take care of things like that and forget them, leave them be, let them be in peace, let the man who made the mistake worry about it on his own with his own maker. And that's about it. There's a few other things you might want to know about. Our homeless population is growing. I interviewed 10 people last week over on Grove and Willow that are arriving from out of town, that come from out of town. I said, "Why are you here? You're homeless. You have no money. You're standing here in the 7-Eleven parking lot." And I can give you a ride to the soup kitchen. We have two great soup kitchens. They do very well. Paul over here on Benedict Street, Baldwin Street, and Mrs. Dublin over on East Main Street. They do a great job of taking care of people properly. Many times, if you've ever had the misfortune to be in a situation where you were needing something and you didn't fit the profile of the moment, you're not treated very well. Both of the soup kitchens treat people as if they were their own family, with a kindness, not a derogatory approach. But now, that's about it for the day. Peace be with you. Have a good day. Thanks for joining us today.
Thank you.
Next speaker from 112 Concord Street, Thomas Pelletier.
Thomas Pelletier, 112 Concord Street. I come here about a couple of things. First on your agenda tonight, items three and 10. Items three is about the Hopeville Park project. I would ask that you guys fund that. And seeing what I saw this weekend, driving around to most of our parks, finally, the weather is starting to hit. A lot of people are out. I got to say that a lot of people were using our parks this weekend. Item number 10 on the agenda, the approval of construction contract for Huntington Park Restrooms. I could tell you that's one of my parks, even though I consider all parks, and a lot of my commissioners feel the same way, that we try to take care of all the parks, even though we're giving certain parks. But Huntington Park, I visit it on a daily basis now with softball and baseball getting into gear. And I know that last year, in the last few years, we've picked out certain parks that we felt was in desperate need of each year to do the rehab of the bathrooms. I could tell you this year, I'm glad to see that Huntington Park is on. I know we did a lot of patch-up jobs last year on that bathroom, and it's a heavily-used bathroom, so I would ask for unanimous consent. There are a lot of people, at least six days a week, they use that park for softball all day long. And, you know, it's just another testament to the city investing in our parks and doing the best thing that they can to continue to help the infrastructure of our parks. And it's a quality-of-life issue that, you know, a lot of people go out, a lot of people around this area unfortunately don't have the luxury of being able to get in a car and travel and go places. And a lot of people tend to go to our parks, and it's good for our children that might not have any place to go. They're in our parks, they're staying off the streets, and I would commend the city to keep doing what it's doing for our parks. One of the other things that I wanted to bring up tonight, I was a little shocked. I know that we're in budget season, and we are in the time of questioning our department heads. I was a little shocked last week at one of the questions that came up to the police department at the time. You know, in a time that we're getting ready to hire or put on the streets more police officers, class is just about ready to end. I know that the fire department is in the works of hiring more firefighters. There's a question raised about overtime, and do we think that, you know, we're putting the public in jeopardy? As crime tends to go up about this time of year, and the police department does a fine job at what they do. And would I like to see more police officers out there? Absolutely. But there's a process in which we go through in hiring officers out there. And I got to say, the police that we have out there are doing a superb job at what they do. The question was raised about the cut to the overtime in the fire and police. That's because we're getting ready to hire more of these people coming online. So, I mean, that's usually what you would do when you have more bodies coming online. You know, there's not a need at that time. But I just find it a little shocking that, you know, the last budget that we had, and there was a need for overtime, there were members on this board that were adamant about not putting more money into the overtime budget. And, you know, to throw out there that...
One minute, Mr. Pelletier.
Okay. To throw out there that we're putting public's life in jeopardy. There's nobody in this city, or on this board, or the administration, that would ever put the public's life in jeopardy. I think that the answer by the chief of police and the answer by everybody in both those departments, if they felt that that was going to be the case, I guarantee you that they would have adamantly said, "We need the overtime." But, you know, you can't say one thing and then the next budget say something contradictory to it. And that's the only issue that I have with that. But I know that we're all trying to do what's best for the budget, and we got to think about the taxpayers. But, you know, let's really look at the budget and make sure that we have the facts straight. Thank you.
Mr. President, that's the last speaker tonight.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda would be the approval of minutes for the meeting of Monday, April 23, 2018. Is there a motion?
Motion approved. The minutes of the regular meeting for Monday, April 23, 2018, so moved.
Second.
Made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Napoli. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. The minutes are approved. Before we go into committees, you should have on your desks this evening a letter from the Nagatuck Railroad Company, marked as item number 11. It's just a notification of a vegetation plan that they are going to be undertaking in 2018, and they're required to notify the Department of Transportation and the local municipalities. And so this is the notification. So I would entertain a motion to add item number 11 to the agenda tonight, and just receive it and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
Made, motion made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries the items added as new business number 11 to be received and placed on file. With that, we'll recess into committees. There's not a lot of items, so we'll do both of them out here this evening. We'll start with finance and then go to intergovernmental.
I call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Item number three, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the substantial amendment for CD year 41, 2015-2016 Annual Action Plan in order to reprogram the balance of $95,153.0 in the Hopeville Park Project to a new playscape as requested by Diane C. Tolan, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number four, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the substantial amendment for CD year 42, 2016-2017 Annual Action Plan in order to relocate $135,000 given to Brass City Harvest for a greenhouse on Mill Street to fix equipment for Phase 1 of the regional food hub, and substantial amendment to the CD year 41, 2015-2016 Annual Action Plan in order to utilize the unused funds in the amount of $78,507.83 for this Brass City Harvest project as requested by Diane C. Tolan, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Item number six, your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the memorandum of understanding and grant assignment certification with the Greater Waterbury Transit District for seniors and disabled demand-responsive transportation as requested by Diane C. Tolan, Housing and Community Planning Program Director, Office of Community Development.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Standing committee. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $33,020.0 submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.
I'd like to call into order the intergovernmental meeting scheduled for Monday, May 7, 2018. Our first item on the agenda is item number five. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves the Eversource for Energy Efficiency Services Agreement for the upgrade of outdoor lighting fixtures located at the water treatment plant. Total cost of the project is $23,647.11. The first $5,000 will be paid by the American Water per the contract. Eversource incentives totaling $7,094.13. And the final cost to the water department will be $11,552.98, as submitted by Don Carver, Superintendent Bureau of Water. Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to approve item five.
Second.
I have a motion to approve item five, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Next item on the agenda, item number nine. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves the project authorization letter, PAL, with the Connecticut Department of Transportation in connection with construction services in connection with John G. Gilmar Elementary School, Safe Routes to School Project, and to authorize the mayor to execute said PAL on behalf of the city, as submitted by Paul Bellegamba, PE, City Engineer Bureau of Engineering. Alderman Napoli.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve item number nine, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Next item on the agenda, item number 10. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approves the construction contract with Richards Corporation in the amount of $260,975 for Huntington Park restroom replacement, as submitted by Paul Bellegamba, PE, City Engineer Bureau of Engineering. Alderman Napoli.
Motion to approve item 10.
I have a motion to approve item 10, which has been seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Napoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Paul, thank you for being here. Just one quick question. Is this one of those pre-built structures that will be put on the premises?
Yes. Paul Bellegamba, City Engineer. Yes, this is the same structure that we've done in...
The microphone.
Thank you. This is the same structure we've done in six parks so far.
That's what I thought. Thanks, Paul.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay. And with that, we'll return to the regular order of business. The following items are on the consent calendar. Item one is receive and place on file. Item two is receive and place on file. Item three is on consent to approve the substantial amendment for CD year 41, 2015 to 2016. for CD year 41, 2015-16 Annual Action Plan in order to reprogram the balance of $95,153 in the Hopeville Park Project to a new playscape. Item four is on consent to approve a substantial amendment for CD year 42, 2016-2017 Annual Action Plan in order to reallocate $135,000 given to Brass City Harvest for a greenhouse on Mill Street to fix equipment for Phase 1 of the regional food hub, and substantial amendment to CD year 41, 2015-16 Annual Action Plan in order to utilize the unused funds in the amount of $78,507.83 for this Brass City Harvest project. Item number five is on consent to approve an agreement with Eversource for Energy Efficiency Services for the upgrades of outdoor lighting fixtures located at the water treatment plant, total cost of the project of $21,641.11, with the first $5,000 paid by American Water per contract. Eversource incentive is $7,094.13. Final cost to the water department of $11,552.98. Item six is on consent to approve a memorandum of understanding and grant assignment certification with the Greater Waterbury Transit District for seniors and disabled demand-responsive transportation. The city's allocation from the state for the services is based on an proportionment which takes into account ridership percentage and total number of elderly. For this fiscal year of '19, that amount is $81,596. Item seven is receive and place on file. Item number eight is receive and place on file. Item number nine is on consent to approve a project authorization letter with the Connecticut DOT in connection with construction services in connection with the John G. Gilmore Elementary School Safe Routes to School Project, and to authorize the mayor to execute said PAL on behalf of the city. So 100% federally funded under the Safe Routes and School Program on a reimbursement basis with a maximum amount of $456,500. Item 10 is on consent to approve a construction contract with Richards Corporation in the amount of $260,975 for the Huntington Park restroom replacement. Item 11 is on consent. It's the notification from the Nogatuck Railroad Company on their vegetation management plan. Is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Motion approved. The consent calendar is read.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Brunelli and seconded by Alderman Napoli to approve the consent calendar is read. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Hearing none, a yes vote will be to approve the calendar as read, and a no vote to disapprove it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The consent calendar is approved. With respect to standing committees, the chair would recognize Alderman Hadley as chair of the finance committee.
Mr. President, your finance committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve and authorize the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $33,020.00 submitted by Revenue Collection Manager Frank A. Caruso.
So moved. Motion having been made by Alderman DiGiova Carlo. Was there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Martinez McCarthy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. The refunds are approved. Is there anything for the good of the order? Hearing none, Alderman Brunelli.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion having been made by Alderman Brunelli, seconded by Alderman Lopez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. We're adjourned. I'd remind everyone that our second meeting with the department heads is a week from tomorrow at 6:30 in these chambers. Thank you and have a great week.